Well, Michael, no intro today, unfortunately, just because we were late on Friday. Good morning.
Good morning. That's not, I was looking forward to our little video intro clip. Good morning, viewers. Good morning, listeners. Good morning, followers. Good morning, everybody out there. It's Monday today and what a week it's going to be. The witness list came out just after 9am. And we've got Member for Leppington, Nathan Haggerty, first up today. And then Tuesday to Friday, Mr Breton is going to have a very busy day. The current CEO of Liverpool Council has been booked in for four days. So that should be interesting times ahead.
Yeah, council meeting right in the middle too, Michael. So Wednesday night council meeting and having David Breton on.
He's got plenty of time to get back for the council meeting. The hearings finish at 4pm. He can pop down to Circular Quay, catch a train and be back in Liverpool by 5.30 at the latest. So it's not an issue.
And who have we got on today, Michael?
I doubt he does things like catch a train. I'm sure he's got his beastmaster, you know, big four-wheel drive parked somewhere that he can race out on the M5 or whatever and be in Liverpool in a two shakes of a lamb's tail traffic permitting.
And what's happening today, Monday, the 25th of August, after the weekend break, we had John Ojaka finishing up on Friday afternoon. And look, there was definitely a lot of roundabouts and diamondabouts and, you know, from legal arguments, I guess. And the Commissioner actually interjected it a couple of times on Friday, Michael.
Correct, correct. I felt like I was on one of those massive roundabouts that you find in Europe or America, where you have like five, six, seven exits and you keep going round and round and round and round until you sort of get to the right one. But yes, the Commissioner pointed out that he'd had enough of the, who started the rumor of the 150 terminations? And that people needed to, or the legal reps needed to start addressing the terms of reference to help him formulate his recommendations rather than going off on this, just digging up information about this one point. So rather than labouring the 150, I think it's time to move on. And the Commissioner made that fairly clear on a couple of occasions, in my opinion. What do you think, Vijay?
Yeah, absolutely. I thought, I think you hit it. Hit the nail on the head, Michael. I think that it was all very, very good. And the way that it unraveled and I thought that the Commissioner did a good job of, you know, bringing everything to a point, Michael. I thought that that was important. Now, Nathan Haggerty today is appearing on the stand. And I think that it's probably a good idea, and you've asked this morning, that we go back over a couple of the terms of reference, just to refresh the whole audience as to, you know, why we're here and what they're actually investigating and what they're looking at. Because we have got a little bit sidetracked, I feel, and you've said the same very well on Friday. But the first term of reference, whether the council complied with statutory obligations and its policies and procedures in recruitment and selection relating to the occupants for the relevant positions, Michael.
Well, this is very important because we've had testimony regarding the hiring of, say, Shane Mallard, who is a Liberal Party member, appears to be maybe a former Liberal Party member, but certainly he was an associate of the Mayor of Liverpool. They were in the Liberal Party together. Mr Mallard went off to serve in the upper house. And when he lost his pre-selection, he was made welcome back at Liverpool Council under a contract to start with and then as a full-time position, of which he's now been terminated, an early termination of the contract, which means he gets a payout. Then we've had the issue of Betty Bustiani, the replacement for Shane Mallard as the policy adviser to the mayor. And that evidence came back and it was, you know, found that the mayor had lunch with Miss Bustiani or Mrs Bustiani, I'm not sure whether it's Ms or Mrs, but irrelevant. So he's had lunch with Betty Bustiani, brought her back to the office with John Ojaka. And Shane Mallard was apparently instructed to make it happen to get her on board. So that, you know, I think that that point comes back. The one point that hasn't been covered is the issue of the Austral duty manager. So this was a position that was floated by the mayor in December 2022 after a community forum. And it wasn't actually a duty manager's position that was stated, it was stated by the mayor that there was going to be another employee put on full-time in Austral to look after potholes, parks, et cetera, et cetera. And rubbish builders' compliance, et cetera. And what ended up happening was after John Ojaka was appointed in the early 23, they created a position of Austral duty manager and the person that appointed that.
Was that delivery manager?
Austral duty manager, wasn't it?
I'm not sure. I just, yeah.
Yeah, I believe it was called Austral duty manager, but Austral delivery manager, possibly, yes. You are probably correct. But in any case, the person appointed to that happens to be former councillor Tony Hachidi, who's also, you know, a member of the Liberal Party and had worked with the mayor for a number of terms. So I think 12 years or something. So it comes back to that point of reference as to who was being appointed and how they were being appointed and to make sure that, you know, things were all above board. So the big gap for me has been the point from when the mayor was elected in December 2021. And then when former CEO Dr Eddie Jackson was terminated at the very first meeting of that particular council in February 2022. Now, there were six directors employed at that point in time. And I believe, I remember that I heard that five of those six directors had basically left during the time that even before John Ojaka was appointed. Now, we've heard testimony from John Ojaka saying that he had gone to the directors at the time he was appointed CEO and said, if you want to be here, here, if not, if you want to go, I'll give you a couple of hundred grand and away you go. The question I have that's been on my mind is, how many of those six directors that were there in December 21 were actually there when Ojaka was appointed in December 22, 12 months later? How many had actually left during that 12-month period when Peter Diplos was the acting CEO?
Yeah, look, it's a very good point, Michael. And if memory serves me correctly, it wasn't, it was only recently that the Austral role was advertised again from memory. I'd have to double check on that result. Let's take a look at the second term of reference.
Really? Is that Austral delivery manager role available? I might put my hand up for that.
Yeah, well, you've said that before too. So let's look at the second term of reference, Michael. Whether the recruitment and selection process for the relevant positions was merit-based or whether other identifiable factors influenced recruitment and selection processes? And if so, what were those factors?
Well, you know, that comes back to what we've been talking about, cronies, potential allegations of cronyism. So let's have lunch and let's get your job is one example.
Good morning, Chris. Thanks for joining us on the stream this morning. And just for everyone out there listening, we do expect to cross live to Sydney in the next couple of minutes or so. And taking the stand today and giving evidence is none other than Member for Leppington, Mr Nathan Haggerty. And he's got quite a bit to say, you'd imagine. He's certainly put a lot of stuff out in the press about, you know, how he feels about Liverpool Council, Michael. And it'll be interesting to see what he says today.
Absolutely. And he's obviously got a lot of inside information. So our friend, the, you know, council assisting the Commissioner, Ms Trish McDonald, will be leading the questions there. And I don't know whether we'll be having enough, you know, any time for him to be cross-examined by our other learned friend Kate. And her surname escapes me at this stage. I've gone blank.
Richardson.
Kate Richardson, that's right. Or even the council for John Ojaka or anybody else. So it'll be interesting to hear what Mr Haggerty has to say for his testimony today and whether he will be then called back at a later time. But if we can just quickly run through those other couple of points that we've got. Because thank you for putting those up early for all the people who are interested. They will put on the screen at the beginning of our live stream. And you can stop the feed and actually read through those yourselves. So they're.
I've just put that back up again this morning. Yeah, I've just put them back up now just briefly. Good morning to you, Des. Thanks for tuning in this morning. We hope you're enjoying the public hearings. And yes, it's another new week. And we're hoping today to get some new information from Member for Leppington, Mr Nathan Haggerty. Let's go back to the terms of reference, Michael, while we're waiting. Whether the council, number three, whether the council complied with council policies and its obligations under the New South Wales State Records Act in regard to maintenance and retention of, yeah, in regard to retention of records relating to recruitment and selection for the following, for the relevant positions, Michael.
Yes, that's right. So also email trails, the use of text messages, the use of WhatsApp. All those issues have been raised and I'm sure that the Commissioner will be taking notes on all those points and, you know, for his recommendations to the Minister. So we're just waiting here. And as, you know, it's almost quarter past 10 and we still haven't had the Commissioner walk in. But look, I think we've got an interesting day ahead. I think we've got an interesting week ahead. Certainly last week was, you know, with the cross-examination of John Ojaka once again. And the testimonies by Lauren Myers and also by Shane Mallard at the beginning of last week. Very interesting, broke new ground. And moving forward, there's gaps of the puzzle that are starting, jigsaw puzzle that are starting to be filled in. I still believe that there are a couple of big chunks of that picture that are missing. And we haven't, you know, Chris McDonald hasn't gone down some of those paths yet. And to look at various issues, as I said, that first 12 months from February 22 to December 22, where Peter Diplos was the acting CEO and where there was not so much a restructure, but an official restructure where departments had been changed, but renaming of departments. And I believe where a number of the existing directors that were there in December 21 at the election were not there by December 22 when John Ojaka was appointed. So I'd like to certainly find out in the dates when people left or were terminated and whether any possible restructure had been put into effect during that period of time. Because that plays into the issue of the terms of reference for the public inquiry and public hearings.
The fourth term of reference, whether there were any conflicts of interest which may have influenced recruitment for the relevant positions and whether such conflicts may have influenced recruitment and selection processes for those positions.
Yep. So obviously, that's, you know, conflicts of interest in relation to connections. There seems to be a lot of Liberal Party connections and there seems to be some friendship connections and previous association connections. All that will be addressed. Just if you can go through five and six quickly, because we don't know how long before the Commissioner walks in.
So whether council's finances are being adversely affected as a result of staffing decisions, including but not limited to termination payouts, Michael?
Yes, so obviously there's been early termination payouts for the likes of Dr Eddie Jackson, for former CEO John Ojaka, former directors have also been paid out. There's been, there was that non, notice of motion where, or question on notice, sorry, by non-resident, non-rate payer councillor Matthew Hart, where it was disclosed that there were, what, $700,000 paid out to other staff members for early termination, which could have been, we don't know what they were for. Because they could have been for compensation, they could have been for a whole bunch of things. But in any case.
Number six, Michael, number six, whether concerns raised regarding the conduct of staff or councillors have been adequately managed and addressed to ensure a safe and functional operation of council consistent with work health and safety obligations.
Yes, there's been claims of work health and safety issues. Some toes have been trodden on allegedly, literally.
Very true, very true.
Codes of conduct have been issued, over 100 of them. The other issue, you know, in relation to the diamond about, the roundabout, is, you know, I'm wondering whether that will be looked at and what, you know, with all these articles that have been out about, you know, alleged corruption and kickbacks, et cetera, in various other government authorities like Transport for New South Wales and down in Canberra and at the Western Sydney Airport, I'm wondering whether any connections between staff or council and these contractors that did the roundabouts will be looked into? And if there's been any, shall we say, incentives offered to get the job and to whom?
Number, I'm going to leave that one. We're not touching that, Michael. Number seven, any other related matters identified to this office that may have impacted upon the governance and effective administration of the council, Michael?
Well, that's where the roundabouts and diamondabouts come into number seven.
Right. So look, potentially, they're going to have to have a look at this. And Jason Breton, the CEO of Liverpool City Council, is going to be producing a report to council on Wednesday night as part of CEO O2, which actually breaks down not only the cost of Diamond About, the most famous roundabout in Australia, but also, Michael, all of the other roundabouts that were part of the mayor's election promises prior to being re-elected.
Well, that'll be interesting because, you know, we know, I know we're well over 1,000 days. I'm not sure how many days we are, but we're well over 1,000 days and the 100-day promises have well and truly elapsed. And the number of them are, you know, yet to be fulfilled big time. So I don't know that there are election promises anymore. They're definitely broken promises.
Des adds, hopefully they'll move on with some new topics that many of us are interested in knowing, Michael. So there's definitely an element there that people want to get into the stuff that hasn't even yet been spoken about in many regards.
Correct. We're sick of focusing on the 150, you know, the rumor of, who started the rumor of 150 people? And terminations and moving on to, you know, the issues that have to be addressed and various other issues that have come up in the last nine months since the inquiry was announced.
We're just about, we're hopefully only a couple of minutes away from crossing live to Sydney for the commencement of Day 20 into the public inquiry of Liverpool City Council as part of this. That we're broadcasting the hearings as they happen every day, Michael. How can people get hold of the public hearings if they are not able to watch them live with us during the day today?
Thank you for asking that question, Vijay. And the answer is, we have a number of ways that we're broadcasting the information about the public hearings. So the first is obviously by sharing the live stream through our social media channels. So we share it through our local Pulse Press Facebook page. We share it through the 2GLF 89.3 Facebook page. We share it through my Michael Angalkovich Independent Campaigner Facebook page. So that's your first option if you can watch live through the day. If you can't, you can also watch it on YouTube. But the beauty of watching it on YouTube is you can go back at any time and then play it at a later time when it's convenient. So you might be working through the day, you can't sit and watch the live hearings. You get home, you hop on YouTube, Local Pulse Press, and you can watch the hearings then at your leisure. And the beauty of YouTube is you can actually speed it up to either 1.25 or 1.5 speed. And you can still get to understand the questioning. I found that very handy. I listen to it at those speeds and it goes a little bit quicker. So you can get through things a little bit faster. The other way to catch up on the information for the public hearings is to read about them. So you can actually read the transcripts of the testimony through the OLG website, which can be anywhere from 80 to 100 pages, or take the easy option and go to www.localspulse, one word, localspulse.press and read the summary. So we do a summary of the transcripts and then post up an article. Usually it's a day, sometimes two days later, depending on how quick the transcripts are posted. But that's another way. And also those links are shared on our Facebook pages. We've got pinned articles where each day it goes in the comment section. Plus, of course, we post it on our Facebook page, the actual link. So that's it. So that's the way you can hear all about it. We are hoping, obviously, we encourage our followers and we encourage you to share this information with your family and friends and work associates who are in the Liverpool area and who are interested. Please share that on your social media. Please share it. I'm about to do an email blast with a link to everybody. I'll send that out to my various community contacts, various community leaders. And we've got to get this information out there. This is very, very important for the future of Liverpool. We need to make sure that we're on top of it. And going forward, we'll see how things play out. So Monday morning, it seems to be that, you know, we're having a little bit of a late start once again. But I'm sure the Commissioner is there about to walk in any tick of the clock. And fingers crossed that that's about to happen. Mr Haggerty is hopefully in the room and waiting to give his testimony about the goings-on of what happened during his term at council in relation to the questions and matters raised. And perhaps there might be some new revelations from Mr Haggerty, Member for Leppington, today. So he's on for the full day. It will be interesting to hear what his, where Trish McDonald is going to take him and what part of the jigsaw puzzle pieces he's going to provide. And, you know, will there be another section filled in today?
Yeah, look, it's going to be explosive. Nathan has certainly been not holding back in making statements to the press about where he feels Liverpool Council is letting the residents down over his electorate of, over that way in Leppington. You know, the residents over there are increasingly frustrated with the delivery of the parks and the roads and the facilities to support the residential expansion over there. And he's been advocating very hard for that and time and time again. He's been, you know, pointing the finger where, you know, funding's been provided for these certain projects that just haven't been delivered. And there's a report going before council this Wednesday evening about how much of the capital works that Liverpool Council was unable to deliver in last year's budget that's carried forward into this year. And, you know, just to make that a little bit simpler for everybody, there's money sitting in Liverpool City Council that's restricted. They can't use it unless they use it on this particular project. And I'm thinking about a couple of the, a couple of the federal funded ones, Michael, that, you know, very important intersections for the community, quite dangerous. And I'm thinking about, you know, go on.
We know, so we know. So obviously, the Curragong Road, Lynn Parade, Beach Road intersection, where the roundabout needs to be taken out and traffic lights need to be put in. Curragong Road, Mowbray Road, Aprestons, where traffic lights need to be put in.
That's dangerous.
Park Bridge Estate over in Middleton Grange, where the tunnel needs to be put in under the M7, M12, where the funding has been provided. So all of those there. Speaking of budgets.
Yeah, go on.
Cancelled swimming pool, cancelled swimming pool has yet to happen. So hopefully that's happening. After these rains, hopefully there's going to be money for all the potholes. I don't know if you recall, but a couple of years ago, the potholes were so bad out in our area in Liverpool that the state government provided Liverpool Council with $10.5 million to patch up the potholes. And let me tell you, I've been driving around the last couple of days and there are potholes everywhere that have reappeared after all these rains, ongoing rains. And we're now getting photos or pictures on Facebook of damaged tyres, damaged rims. So that is now sort of starting, I've noticed that over the last, certainly over the last few days. More so than the norm. So.
Yeah. Also, if you're going down to Green Valley Shops, if you shop at Green Valley Plaza, down the back there behind the police station, Jesus George, there is a couple of whoppers behind there. You're just about, you know, make sure you hold your kids' hands as you cross over there because you could lose children down some of those potholes, I reckon. They're just so big. And if you're not watching out, as you point out, Michael, you can actually do a lot of damage to your car, you know?
They'll swallow the front end of your car if you're not careful, mate.
That's exactly right. So ladies and gentlemen, if there's anything, as we've always said here on the Pulse, if there's two consistencies, it's they never run on time. In fact, they got us on Friday. They came back three minutes early, which is the first time on day 19 in the afternoon session that they'd ever come back early from a break, which completely threw us into a bit of a, it sort of set off a few technical issues. So apologies for that on Friday. But look, we are here waiting. We're expecting any minute now. We've got Member for Leppington, Mr Nathan Haggerty on the stand today. He is due to give testimony all day. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. At this stage, it's all been checked out to Jason Breton, the current CEO of Liverpool City Council. I'll be very, very interested to see what he's got to say. And Michael, as you've pointed out extremely well, I'm quite keen to see him face some questions on Diamond About and these current, you know, the aspects of roundabouts, yeah, and code of conducts that are outstanding at Liverpool City Council. I think there's been a number of different things. I think he held that report back that was ready for last month's council meeting. You know, whether that was done on purpose or whether he was still waiting on some information. He did talk in past tense that that report was due. At the same time, there was an, advertised was the director of operations role. That was advertised at the same time. So, you know, some people are sort of saying that, is this a convenient matter of timing? That council's got bad news, but that they need to appoint a new director into that role. Because obviously, he's been acting in that role now for 12 months. And as we've learned through the hearings is that, you know, you can't really extend that beyond the 12 months. You've got to advertise the role and get someone in there of, you know, show that there's been a competitive process and that you're offering that job out publicly to see, you know, what the level of engagement is and the skill level of people that are going to apply for it. So that'll be very interesting. And then obviously the cost. And I guess the biggest thing for me, Michael, and what I cannot reconcile myself with and what I get absolutely furious about is the fact that the contractor that was selected did not have the appropriate equipment to do the job. He did the job in one night. The installation cost $92,000 and change and, well, $93,000 and change, I believe. And he still got paid, even though he put down that roundabout. It was not the roundabout that was planned, that the plans were, that's what the plans he was given. He put down a completely different roundabout. And then Liverpool City Council, even though it wasn't, what was promised wasn't delivered and he didn't have the right equipment, he was still paid. And not only was he paid for installing it, but it looks like it was the same contractor that actually removed the roundabout the next, you know, seven days later and put another 30 grand in his pocket, Michael, or 20 grand for removal and 30 grand for remediation works.
Yep. So pretty amazing stuff. So interesting.
Crazy.
Yeah, there's got to be, it's. Yeah, there's got to be, there's got to be questions asked about that. And a little bit of homework that I did over the weekend was in relation to budget deficits. So we'll be talking about that on the show in the upcoming week. So I listened in on Thursday. So you remember that in, I think, twenty twenty two, we had an eleven point four million dollar budget deficit. It would have been twenty one or twenty two. Can't remember. Can't remember the, but then there was a five, a five hundred thousand dollar surplus. And then we've had two more deficits in twenty four and twenty five, you know, and we're talking like eleven and thirteen million dollars. So I do remember in the lead up to the twenty twenty one election, the mayor, the current mayor was saying, you know, the sky's falling in, there's a fourteen million dollar budget. Well, it wasn't fourteen, it was eleven point four. And that we're going to, you know, can't afford it. We're going to go into the, into administration. Well, he certainly had his crystal ball about possibly going into administration because it looks like council could be going into administration. But I don't know if it's because of the deficits, but there have been a number of deficits during the terms that Mr Manoon has been now as holding as mayor since his election in December twenty one. So twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, and now thirty June twenty five. Three out of four have been deficits. So and we're talking, you know, millions of dollars in deficits, so.
Tez came out, has just made a comment on YouTube, the Diamond About contractors let themselves open to be sued. Why hasn't council started the process? Pretty fair comment, wouldn't you think, Michael?
It is. It is a fair comment. And it's an issue if legal action is going to be taken. Well, hopefully that will be addressed at the council meeting on Wednesday night. So, you know, council will meet, the information will be provided, and then the councillors can possibly move a notice of motion and vote on it to see whether they want to take any action to recover any of those funds that have been paid, you know. And is there a case to be answered? That's the question. And do do we as rate payers want to go down that path and spend more money on lawsuits to try and recover, you know, funds that have been paid out? How much will it cost us to actually go down that path once again? Is it throwing good money after bad? And this is sometimes the question you have to ask yourself in business.
Well, while I agree with, I agree with what you're saying there, Michael. My, my, this is my point of contention is we found out with John Ajarka over the last three weeks that John was asked, you know, basically the mayor had the opinion, well, let John go and get his money, you know, let him. And basically what I meant by that is part of the termination payment for CEOs was that they would receive X amount. I think you said it's twenty eight weeks, is that right?
Thirty eight, thirty eight.
Thirty eight weeks.
Thirty six or thirty eight, yeah.
And what the mayor decided was that, no, he wasn't going to hand that over, let John go and get his money. So he had to go and take legal action. The reason I say that is you bring that back, that attitude or that approach back to Diamond About, why you would sign the cheque and pay that person or pay that contractor when what wasn't, you know, nothing that was delivered was what was on the plan. And the fact that we had to remove it, why wouldn't you take the same approach there and say, well, hang on a second, Mr Contractor, you haven't delivered what was promised. You know, we're not going to pay you. Go to the, let's go and sort that out in court. I just don't know whether they would have been paid.
AJ, it comes back to the questions that are being asked on social media by a number of residents. And I've seen the, you know, I've seen the half a dozen of these at least. Question in, to paraphrase it is, were there any connections between the contractor and council? And if so, what were they?
Touch that one, Michael.
Mate, that's what's been, these are questions that are being asked by members of the public on Facebook in a number of community groups. So, you know, that's that's for someone to start asking as well at a council level.
Mate, I think we've drawn this out as far as we can. I mean, ladies and gentlemen, of the public, I'm sorry, we are banging on like a couple of old chucks and that's what Michael and I tend to do. If you'd like to tune in on Thursday, you want more banter from nine o'clock on Thursday mornings, live from our Big Street Studios, right in the heart of Liverpool. We have a two hour show. And well, there you go. It's all coming. We're going to cross life to Sydney.
I just do listen to administration.
Yes.
There are four documents that I would seek to tender. And I haven't, I've, it's MFI nineteen.
Yes.
On the last page, item three eight four. I tender document LCC dot zero two one dot zero zero one dot zero one eight three. Email from Mr Manoon to Mr Ajarka, thirty October twenty twenty three.
Will be exhibit one hundred and sixty two.
Item three eight five, I tender document LCC dot zero two one dot zero zero one dot zero one nine oh. Email chain between Akoto, Mr Manoon and Mr Ajarka, three October twenty twenty three.
Exhibit one hundred and sixty three.
Item three eight six, I tender item LCC dot O two one dot O O one dot O two O two. Letter from Liverpool City Council to Mr Manoon, dated nine November twenty twenty three.
Exhibit one hundred and sixty four.
And item three eight seven, I tender document LCC dot zero two one dot zero zero one dot zero one nine one. Email from Mr Ajarka to Mr Galpin, thirty October twenty twenty three.
Exhibit one hundred and sixty five.
If there's nothing else, I call Nathan Hagerty.
Yes.
Come forward, Mr Hagerty. Do you wish to take an oath or an affirmation, Mr Hagerty?
Affirmation.
Thank you.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr Math, at the station, that's my appearance.
Yes, of course.
Seeking lady to appear on behalf of Mr.
Yes, leave is granted for that. Thank you, Miss Kelly.
All right, please state your full name.
Nathan Matthew Hagerty.
Your current occupation?
I'm the state member for Leppington.
When were you elected to that position?
March twenty twenty three.
And are you a member of the Australian Labor Party?
I am.
Before becoming elected to state parliament, were you involved in Liverpool City Council?
Yes, I was elected to Liverpool City Council in twenty sixteen and stayed on council until December twenty twenty three.
When you were elected in two thousand and sixteen, was that the election where Wendy Waller was elected the mayor?
It was, yes.
Which ward did you represent?
North Ward.
In the twenty twenty one council election, Ms Waller didn't stand as mayor. In addition to standing as a councillor, did you stand for mayor?
Yes, I was the mayoral candidate for the Labor Party.
You were unsuccessful?
I was.
Mr Manoon became the mayor or was elected the mayor?
Yes.
But you were re-elected as a councillor again for the North Ward?
Yes.
And at least for a period from about March twenty twenty three to December twenty twenty three, you were both a member of state parliament and a councillor?
I was.
Right. The council that was elected in two thousand and sixteen, we've heard evidence of obviously councillors who represent the Liberal Party, the Australian Labor Party, and also there are independents. And some of those independents belong to an independent party.
Yes, so there were, the mayor Wendy Waller was Labor. There were four, in addition to that, there were four Labor councillors, four Liberal councillors and two, quote unquote, independents who were both at that time members of the Liverpool Community Independence Team.
And sorry, you said there was the mayor for Labor councillors and then four Liberal councillors?
Yes. So five, four, two.
And the two independent councillors, was one of those councillor Hall?
Yes.
And who was the second one?
Caress Rhodes.
Now, in the two thousand and twenty one election, what were the, how were the various parties represented in that council?
So the same with the exception of the mayor. So you had Mr Manoon as the mayor, a Liberal. Four Liberal, four Labor, and again councillors Hall and Rhodes from the Liverpool Community Independence Team. However, councillor Rhodes did resign from the Liverpool Community Independence Team, I think several months after the election.
All right. So sometime during that time of the council?
Yes.
And so continued as an independent, an independent, not attached to the independent?
An independent proper.
Right, I want to turn to some topics, excuse me. First topic I want to turn to is the purchase of property by the council at six hundred Cow Pasture Road. Now, jumping ahead, when the purchase of Cow Pasture Road was first raised, was it the case that it was raised because it possibly could become a depot for the council?
So it was first raised in a WhatsApp group chat by the mayor who said words to the effect, anyone might want to buy a depot? Yes.
All right. Going backwards, over time, have there been reports by council looking at matters concerning depots within the council?
Yes. So with the construction of Western Sydney International Airport and a new city Bradfield, both in the local government area and a lot of growth on the western fringe of the LGA in places like Austral, council undertook a process to effectively west of the airport in Eritreopolis for a third depot.
Would you bring up please INQ dot zero zero four dot zero zero one dot zero zero one zero? And that can be live straight. Can you see that's an operations centre master plan with a date down the bottom of seven November two thousand and eighteen?
Yep, that's it.
And if we move to page four, I'll just draw your attention to the executive summary. Following on from the completion of the Liverpool Depot Operations Strategic Plan, urban, and you can see right down the bottom of that page, that you've got complete urban for Liverpool council. So there, it would appear that there's some kind of consultants who have prepared this report.
Yep.
And then if we go back towards the top of the page, they've been engaged by Liverpool City Council to deliver an operations centre master plan for the council works depot in line with the findings and recommendations of the street strategic plan. And then next paragraph, the master plan has developed a transition strategy for the Liverpool City Council's depot functions to transition from Rose Street site to the council owned land at Devonshire Road and ultimately to an unidentified site in the vicinity of the Western Sydney Airport. And then it goes on and saying each stage of the transition has been detailed in terms of accommodation layout and functionality. And a master plan has been prepared for each of the seven stages.
Yep.
And if you would then go to page six, under introduction, you can see there is a reference to undertake a master plan for the Rose Street depot as well as that transition plan that outlines potential steps necessary for council to transition to a future depot site at Devonshire Road Kemp's Creek. And then ultimately a further transition to an unidentified site closer to the site of the future Western Sydney Airport. And underneath there, there's a rough map which has got, can you see Rose Street?
Yep.
Depot with a blue star next to it.
Yep.
And then there's an arrow five to ten years going over to Devonshire Depot or Western Depot. And then from it, another arrow further west, ten to twenty years. And is that consistent with the evidence that you gave that this was looking at? Ultimately, or council was ultimately looking at some third site for a depot, but over in that western area which had been identified either as the growing area or definitely in the future growing?
Yeah, so the, when, when the state government announced the plan for the Eritreopolis, it had earmarked sections of land that were going to be initially rezoned. And where this star is, is effectively an area that was, I think it's known as the Dwyer Road precinct, which wasn't being rezoned. So the thought there was that that would probably be the most opportunistic area to potentially purchase some land due to, you know, it wouldn't be, hadn't been rezoned, therefore the value wouldn't be as high.
Now, if we could zoom in a little bit. You've got under section one point two background, which towards the bottom, you can see just that paragraph with planning well underway for the Western Sydney Airport. It is also going to have a major impact on the western part of the local government area. And if we can then move to page seven. you can see the paragraph, on this basis, the provision of geographically appropriate operations centre facilities will be critical to the efficient and effective delivery of services to the community within the LGA as it grows and moves west. And then underneath that, the summary of recommendations from the strategic plan. And you can see we've got in green, Ross Street depot be developed and consolidated as the main Liverpool depot for the next ten years. Then in the yellow, as more development occurs in the western side, the Western depot at Devonshire Road be developed as a new main depot that will also include road recycling material capacity. In association with the development of the Devonshire Road site, council should consider the purchase of adjoining land to the north west and south. And subject to DA approvals, potential uses for these parcels of land include community transport compound, community services store, computer car park, park and ride, et cetera. And then under the purple, purchase property in what will become the industrial and employment precinct adjacent the new Western Airport on its south eastern fringe for the development of the new main Liverpool City Council. And then finally in the blue, to develop the Western Sydney Airport depot site to become the new main depot facility. And it was anticipated that that strategic plan would take, would occur over a number of years?
Yes, so I believe it's in this document, but there is an indicative timeline and an indicative budget as to sort of how that would be phased, phased through over the, you know, next ten to twenty years.
Mr Hagerty, could I just trouble you just to raise your voice a little? When you're engaging with council assisting, which is perfectly fine.
Yep.
I'm just having a little trouble.
No worries.
Thank you.
If we could go to page fifty eight, please? And is this an example of how this plan sets out the various stages? And here we have master plan layout one, Rose Street site. And then underneath the immediate plan for the Rose Street depot is to sustain its ongoing use as council's main depot site from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty seven, when it is replaced by the view depot at Devonshire Road. And then you've got timeframe for work, so about two thousand and eighteen to twenty twenty. Timeframe for operations, two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty seven. And then it sets out various work that's got to be done at Rose Street.
Yes.
And then if we jump to page sixty, I won't take you to all the details, but the same thing, or same, sorry, process is then done for Devonshire Road site.
Correct.
Timeframe for works, twenty twenty to twenty twenty three. Then timeframe for operations, twenty twenty four to twenty thirty six.
Correct.
And then, would we go to page seventy five, please? This section of the report sets out costings.
Correct.
And because at this stage, I'm sorry, withdraw that. So you can see up until the end of stage three, we're looking at costings for Rose Street and Devonshire Road.
Correct.
And then stage four is the Western Sydney Airport site depot layout at the completion of transition strategy number four. Timeframe for works, no later than twenty thirty two to thirty five. Timeframe for operation beyond twenty thirty six. And it's about thirty million anticipated there.
Yes.
And was it your understanding that this report and this strategy was the one that the council adopted and was pursuing?
Yes.
You mentioned earlier a WhatsApp message received from Mr Manoun. Would document INQ dot zero zero four dot zero zero one dot zero zero one one be brought up, please? Oh, yes, please. If we just have a look at the document, there's a reference, you can see there's seems to be some kind of document, and then a message, anyone want to buy a depot? It has a fully equipped and licensed and complying mechanical workshop. It also has an income twenty five million. That message, was that sent to you by the mayor as part of this WhatsApp group?
Yes, so it was in a group chat with all the councillors and the mayor sort of posted that.
What's the date of this message?
About to laugh at.
Sorry.
And then just down the bottom, can you see you respond with, would this replace or complement Rose Street and or Western Depot? And the answer is, right down the bottom, a bit from column A and a bit from column B. Now, as the councillor, I'm sorry, has just noticed, this isn't dated. Roughly, when was this?
It was early August twenty twenty two.
Can I ask you, the, I think you described it as a WhatsApp group. This WhatsApp group was the mayor and all the councillors?
Yeah.
Did you communicate frequently by this method?
We did, but never, never with things like this. It was normally very sort of incidental, casual thing. So, you know, who's attending? It'd usually be, you know, who's attending citizenship ceremony on Saturday? Or, hey, I've arrived at this meeting early, anyone want a coffee? So it was all very sort of casual. For things like this, in my experience, I would have, I would have sent an email or made sure that, you know, we were following the correct procedures in regards to sort of record keeping.
You kept a copy of this?
Yes.
But at that time within council, were there any, to your knowledge, requirements that such an exchange should be recorded or captured within the council records?
Yes, so if someone had approached, if an external party had approached me about buying a depot, I would refer them to either the CEO or the appropriate director. I certainly wouldn't be posting a message in a WhatsApp group.
You just spoke about if somebody approached me. Did you have any discussion with Mr Manoun about how this opportunity came about?
No.
There's, I think I referred you towards the top of that document. There seems to be a reference to another document. Would we bring up, I'm sorry, and you can see it's IM six hundred Cow Pasture Road Len Waters Estate. Would you please bring up LCC dot zero zero four dot zero zero six dot seven seven five four? Yes, please. And you can see there it's on Colliers document, six hundred Cow Pasture Road, a rare industrial opportunity, and right down the bottom, I think it's got information memorandum.
Yes.
And if we go to page two, you can see under introduction, on behalf of our private client, Colliers has the pleasure of offering six hundred Cow Pasture Road to the market for sale. The opportunity is being offered by an expression of interest campaign closing on Tuesday the seventeenth of May at three P M. And then it goes on to describe the premises. To your recollection, is this the document that was attached or there was the link in the WhatsApp?
Yes, that's the document.
And you can see there that at the time of the creation of this document, it was open to expression of interest campaign, which was closing the seventeenth of May at two P M. The WhatsApp message from Mr Manoun, that was in August?
Yeah, and I remember opening the document and sort of seeing that date and thinking, well, obviously, expressions of interest had closed. We were, you know, almost three months past that date.
Did you raise subsequently about the closure of the expressions of interest and why the council still appeared to have an opportunity to buy this?
I can't recall if I did, but I do believe that either myself or one of the other councillors raised it at some point during the process.
Now, at some point, after receiving the WhatsApp message, at some point in August, was there some kind of view or attendance at the site at six hundred Cow Pasture Road?
Yes, so about three days later, there was an exchange of messages in that group chat and then a diary request to do a site visit, I think it was about three days later. And yeah, so there was a, there was a site visit.
Right. Do you recall the date of the site visit?
I think the message was about the third or fourth of August, so this would have been probably the sixth or seventh of August.
Would document OLG dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one four one three be brought up? Now, this is an extract from the mayor's, I'm sorry?
We're catching up.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Yes. Oh, sorry, just before you do, this is an extract from Mr Manoun's diary. That can be live streamed. I know it's not your diary, but can you see on Thursday the fourth, there is an entry, meeting stroke site visit, Mayor Manoun, and it's got factory viewing. Is it possible it was that day of the site view?
Yeah, so that's within a few days of what I recall, and I remember it being about midday, so.
Who attended that meeting or that site visit?
From memory, the mayor, myself, councillor Hall, I think councillor Mick Nort might have been there. A gentleman who introduced himself as Fab Delfonso, who was the, I guess, the agent was there. Acting CEO Peter Dipless, acting director, Tim Paisley, and Lena Kakish, who was, I don't know if she was then the director of planning, but was there from planning, and some other staff.
So you had looked around the site? And did that lead to on the fifth of August, an email from Mr Manoun proposing an extraordinary meeting of the council and a motion to consider it that?
Yes.
Would document LCC dot zero zero two dot zero zero one dot two five five eight be brought up? And if we can go to page five of that document, and it can be live streamed.
Mr Hagerty, you've been on site visits like that one at other times during your term? Either of your terms on council, do you remember?
Not in relation to a purchase of a property. So we would, we would do, you know, we had done a tour of the Rose Street depot. You know, perhaps Western Sydney Airport arranged a site visit to see that, but never in relation to the purchase of a property.
In that context, then, do you remember whether opportunities to purchase properties like this had arisen during your, in other instances during your time on council?
If they had, they wouldn't have been initiated by a WhatsApp message. So it would have potentially come to, it would have been mentioned in a councillor briefing that, you know, an approach had been made to purchase a land, we're undertaking an assessment. Council staff are looking at it and, you know, if it's viable, we'll bring it to a future briefing and discuss it, you know, in further detail with councillors with a view to bringing it to a, to a council meeting.
I wanted page five, that shouldn't, the email down the bottom should not have been redacted. Yes, just that section, that's fine, thank you. Mr Hagerty, the description that you just gave of the usual procedure, so if land or a property is identified, I take it is one of the first considerations that you have a look at the, any master plans or any policies or plans adopted by the council to see if it comes within that?
Well, when you, when you say I, like as an elected member, initially, we wouldn't be involved in that. We would refer it to council We would refer it to council staff in the appropriate department and they'd make an assessment around a, a number of things, including whether, um, had strategic alignment.
All right, so just as a hypothetical example, um, if council were desperate for a property in Liverpool C B D to build a childcare centre. I'm just using as a hypothetical, if a councillor was walking past and suddenly saw, um, a building or a block of land for sale, they could come back and raise it?
Yeah, so if, if I put myself in those shoes, if I knew that council was looking for a childcare centre in the CBD and you walked past a, a place, I'd, I'd flick an email through councillor support, um, probably to the CEO or the appropriate director and said, hey, just saw a, you know, a, a childcare centre for lease, um, you know, is this, is this viable?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, they'd go away for a week or two or a few days and come back and say yes, no. Um, and then from that point, um, you know, potentially, uh, they would do further, they, they do further due diligence, there'd be a briefing and then something would come to council. So it was, it was a pretty involved process and there are obviously a whole bunch of considerations that I wouldn't be privy to. Um.
Which is kind of happening on the operational.
Correct, it's op- operational, um, you know, my job as a councillor is, is to make decisions that are strategic. Um, and, uh, at some point, uh, they would, they would either decide that it wasn't feasible, and if it was feasible, you would assume that a, a, an item would come to a future council meeting.
Um, accompanied by some kind of detailed report?
Yes.
Uh, now, if we can look at this, um, email dated the fifth of August, twenty twenty two by, from, uh, the mayor Ned Manoon to L C C councillors and a number of other people.
Yes.
And it's got confidential notice of motion, extraordinary meeting, ninth of August, twenty twenty two. And then it sets out, the following motion is confidential. And it, it sets out the content of the, the proposed, uh, resolution.
Yes.
Uh, which includes under number one, approve proceeding with a negotiation and due diligence process for the potential purchase of six hundred Cow Pasture Road or the purchase of a depot site. Um, nominates the address and then says that should be confidential.
Yes.
Um, submit an expression of interest submission for the potential purchase of the depot site. Um, and then the expression of interest has got certain parameters which is set out there.
Yes.
Um, including, uh, the offer is to be no greater than twenty five million, noting that the site has current offer of twenty four point five. Um. And then if we can go to the next page. Paragraph three, approve expenditure associated with the due diligence of up to fifty thousand to be funded from the unrestricted reserves general fund.
Yes.
Um. Now, we're in August, twenty twenty two. Uh, your bud-, the budget for council was passed in June, twenty twenty two?
Yes.
Um. Was there, to your knowledge, any, um, amounts earmarked in the budget for first, any of the due diligence and B, any actual purchase of a new depot site?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
Um, and the reference to due diligence of up to fifty thousand dollars to be funded from unrestricted reserves and general funds, um, that's an indication that it's coming from, um, as it says, your unrestricted reserves general fund part, part of kind of, um,
Of the budget. Yes, um, the, the unrestricted reserves general fund was, was, uh, you know, wasn't, it, it's the bit of the budget that would be used for, I guess, things that were not, were not budgeted, um, uh, on quite often, um, so uh, things that weren't foreseen, you would use that as a bit of a, as a, as an area of the budget that, um, could be used for, to look into things that, that were unforeseen.
Uh, now, it's foreshadowed an extraordinary meeting on the ninth of August, that meeting was held?
Yes.
Uh, would you bring up O L G dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one three nine two, please? And it can be live streamed. Now, this is a confidential report that goes to that extraordinary meeting.
Yep.
Uh, and if we follow down that page. There it talks about, at the council meeting of twenty three February, twenty twenty two, there was a mayoral minute in relation to a new depot and the council resolved to immediately start the process to lodge a D A to upgrade Rose Street. Um, in the interim, identify alternative solutions to provide a better mechanical workshop. Aim three, aim to have the construction of a new depot programmed in the twenty three, twenty four budget, if not earlier. And then fund the upgrade of Rose Street depot from the general reserve. And then it, it continues that, um, it picks up point three. Um, noting that a piece of land located at Cow Pasture Road has become available for purchase, maybe a suitable site for the establishment of a new depot. The offer of this land is to be no more than twenty five million. Um, and then this report seeks council endorsement to proceed with an investigation of the site as a suitable site for a new depot. And if we can go to the next page. Uh, if we go right down the bottom of financial implications, costs associated with this recommendation are not included in the budget or long-term financial plan. And then a capping of the due diligence cost at fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Um. And then across the page, noting that council previously resolved to build a new depot at the twenty three February, twenty twenty two. Or build a new depot, it is anticipated any expenditure in relation to purchasing this site would potentially negate be negate any planned expenditure on the new depot. And then if we turn to the minutes of the extraordinary meeting, and that's L C C dot zero zero two dot zero zero one dot zero three zero three.
Well, that coming up, Mr. Hagerty. So at this point, having been reminded of that report, what was your understanding of the, uh, impact on what had been considered and resolved in February of the potential introduction of six hundred Cow Pasture Road?
Yeah, so the, um, the res-, the resolution that was passed in February was part of a wider, I think, mayoral minute in relation to the one, mayor's one hundred day plan. Uh, and the assumption I made at the time that any building of a new depot would, would be out at the Western depot and was in line with the, the strategy that we just covered.
Um. And these are the minutes of the extraordinary meeting. I'll just note for the transcript, the, um, document identifying number of, is I N Q dot zero one two dot zero zero one dot zero 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 eight.
Thank you.
Uh, and that's being live streamed, thank you. Um. Now, could we turn, this was the, um, extraordinary meeting that was looking at that resolution that had been sent through.
Mm-hmm.
The first thing I want to take you to at page two is declarations of interest.
Mm-hmm.
And can you see Mayor Manoon declared a non-procurnary, less than significant interest in the following item? His children attend tutoring in a nearby facility.
Mm-hmm.
So that was declared.
Yep.
But the mayor remained in the chamber.
He did.
And participated in the debate and moving the motion.
He did.
Um, no other possible conflict of interest was raised by the mayor at this meeting?
Uh, if it had been, it would have been recorded here in the declarations of interest.
Uh, and on page three, you can see the resolution. And then if we go to page four. We've got, it was declared, carried, and underneath that, uh, we've got who voted in favour of it, which included you. Um, and then voting against was councillor Hall.
Yes, so the motion that was, uh, passed was different to the recommended one?
How did, can you recall how it differed?
Uh, I believe councillor Caliander, um, uh, proposed an amendment that, um, effectively, uh, you know, re- required or requested that a, that a probity report, um, take place in, in parallel with the whole process. So given we had gotten a WhatsApp message about a week earlier and then we'd, you know, within the space of a couple of days had done a site visit and then we're having, having an extraordinary meeting to pursue due diligence, uh, it's, it's, it's fair to say that al- alarm bells were ringing for me. Uh, and in discussions with the other councillors, uh, we, we couldn't understand why there was a need to have an extraordinary meeting and why uh, we couldn't wait, at least to the August meeting, if not later, the proper August meeting, if not later, uh, to go through this process. So uh, to allay some of our concerns, we, we, councillor Caliander put forward an amendment to, um, essentially have an, an independent at arms length sort of probity advisor, um, keep an eye on things and, and produce a probity report.
And if we can just move a little bit up. Paragraph five, seek to appoint an independent and suitably, um, qualified probity officer as soon as practical to assess all aspects of this process.
Correct.
So, um, that was the, um, amendment that councillor Caliander sought and that was voted in favour or was incorporated into the motion.
Yes, there was, I, I recall there being quite a bit of back and forth and, and sort of massaging of the wording. Um, so that we, you know, we, we could be, we could all be comfortable about, um, you know, the, the wording there, so, yeah.
And ultimately, that was agreed by everybody, other than coun-, well, councillor Hall, but he might have had different reasons for voting against the
Yes.
motion perhaps, rather than that particular one.
Yes.
Yeah. Was his, if you can remember, was his objection more fundamental to the purchase as a whole or?
Yeah, he, he, um, he, he took the view that it, it didn't align, you know, with, with the strategy and we, we didn't need it. Um. That was, you know, but that, that was my view at the time, but I also took the view that, look, I think fifty thousand dollars is a reasonable amount of money uh, to, you know, I guess, kick the tyres, let's say. Yeah, and, and come back.
Thank you.
Uh, could we jump back to the operations centre master plan, uh, which was document I N Q dot zero zero four dot zero zero one dot zero zero one zero? And I took you to page six and this can be live streamed. Uh, I took you to that map with, um, a very rough indication of where certain dep-, current depots were located and with the arrows of where, in a sense, the, um, the designation of it being the main depot was going to kind of move from Rose Street then to Devonshire Road and then ultimately to this new depot out west.
Yes.
Um. The location of Cow Pasture Road, if you have a look at, um, that diagram, roughly where is it located?
Uh, it's about halfway between the Rose Street, which is the, the blue star on the right and Dev-, um, yeah, Devonshire Street, which is the, the blue star in the centre. So it's just to the right of that red line. Um, you'll see there's sort of a, a line that goes from north to south. I believe that's Cow Pasture Road, so it's on, it's on Cow Pasture Road.
All right. Um, could we go to page ten of that document? You can see at the beginning of that page, it says, whilst the Western Sydney Airport depot will ultimately become the main depot for council, the existing and new satellite depots created as a result of this transition strategy will service their immediate areas.
Mm-hmm.
And you can see that, maybe if we can expand that a wee bit. No, no, other way, sorry.
A little bit blurry.
Ah.
That's right, I think it's just the quality of, if, if it's causing you any difficulty, Mr. Hagerty, the quality of image, don't hesitate to speak up.
I know the area very well.
Uh. So you can see in the pink area, Rose Street depot.
Yes.
And immediately at the, at the border between the pink area and the blue area is Cow Pasture Road.
Correct.
So roughly six hundred Car-, Cow Pasture Road, obviously, is on that road.
Yeah, but, uh, if you drew a straight line between the red star and the blue star, um, it would be on the, the border of the, the pink area, sort of right in between there.
And then you've got, obviously, the blue area with Devonshire Road depot.
Mm-hmm.
And then on the left, in the yellow, you've got Western Sydney Airport depot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and your understanding of, um, where this, under this plan, where the new third depot was going to be constructed, was, was that in the yellow area?
Yes.
And you gave evidence earlier about that area, there was still some area that hadn't been rezoned?
Y- yes, I was part of the, um, initial set of rezonings for the airport in Eritreopolis. Uh, there are.
All right, um, do you want to ask these questions in private and then we can see whether it's?
Yes.
Can be published? All right. Pursuant to section, uh, no problem with those who are in the room remaining. All right. Pursuant to section 12B, the Royal Commissions Act, I direct that this part of the hearing take place in private and I further direct that the transcript of this part of the hearing not be published otherwise than in accordance with the usual direction and those who are in the room. Those who are in the room can remain in the room. No one's.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was just identifying something I didn't know.
All right. I've made those directions. Thank you.
Um.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're still in private, Mr Operator. Ye- yes, Miss McDonald.
Mr Hagerty, can I take you back to the map on page 10, which had the pink section, the blue section and then the yellow section?
Yes.
Um, the location of 600 Cow Pasture Road, um, given the strategy set out in this report, um, what is your view on whether it satisfied the, um, proposal in the report of a location ultimately of a third depot in the western area of the local government area?
Uh, well, that was one of my primary concerns about, um, potentially buying this site was that it, it didn't. It was on the border of the blue and pink zones. Uh, it was also on Cow Pasture Road. And one of the major constraints with the Rose Street Depot was the fact that it was, it was on the fringe of, uh, the, the suburb of Liverpool. Uh, and that, uh, traffic congestion was a major issue in terms of quickly deploying, uh, council vehicles to attend to, to, um, to, to their duties. So, um, that would have also been a major constraint for Cow Pasture Road. It's heavily congested in the, in the morning and afternoon peak. And one of the ideas about, uh, first moving to the Devonshire Road, uh, depot and then the, the depot out near the airport was that they'd be going against, uh, the traffic and they'd be able to, you know, get in and out and do what they had to do without, um, being stuck in, uh, I guess the daily, the, the daily grind.
Now, after the extraordinary meeting of the ninth of August, there was then the, uh, normal council meeting on the 31st of August, 2022?
Yes.
Uh, and at that meeting, there was, um, a motion, an urgent motion to, um, increase the due diligence amount from $50,000 to $135,000.
Yes.
Excuse me for a minute. Would you bring up document INQ dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot zero nine eight one at page 61 please? And it can be live streamed. Uh, 61? So you can see there, um, motion of urgency, uh, funding of consultancy costs, due diligence for potential depot site?
Yes.
And then just looking at this very quickly, it refers back to the ninth of August. Um, and the part of the resolution that spoke of due diligence up to $50,000?
Yes.
Um, and then the next paragraph, in seeking to appoint the necessary consultants to undertake a due diligence process, it's become evident that costs will exceed the previously approved amount.
Yes.
And then in the next paragraph, given estimated costs, um, they're now seeking council approval to increase it to $135,000.
Yes.
Um, and again, in the next paragraph, the additional funds to be funded from an unrestricted reserve general fund.
Yes.
Um, and then if we go down towards the bottom of the page, uh, we've got the motion was moved by councillor McNaul, seconded councillor Amun. And, uh, you've got the motion there and then on being put to the meeting, the motion was declared carried.
Yes.
Um, there's no breakdown on, well, I'm sorry, I'll start again. It doesn't state that it was carried unanimously, but the minutes also don't record. So these people voted in favour, these councillors voted against. What is your recollection? Did you vote in favour of it?
I, I voted against it, um, for a number of reasons. One was we were given about two or three hours' notice that this urgency motion was coming to us. Um, I thought $50,000 was a reasonable amount of money to, as I gave evidence before, to quite unquote kick the tyres. Um, it, it almost tripled with very little notice and I had concerns about, uh, where, where did the $50,000 finger come from and now why is it $135,000? So I had some serious questions about the robustness of the process to date and I thought we had spent enough ratepayers money on this.
Right. Uh, do you recall, were you the only person, oh, sorry, I'll start again. Were you the only councillor who voted against it?
From memory, um, myself, councillor Green, councillor Caliander, councillor Hall and possibly councillor Carnib voted against it. So we're six, five.
Uh, your comment that you only had two to three hours' notice, uh, this was, um, a normally scheduled council meeting?
Yes.
Uh, you received your usual agenda items with relevant reports?
Yes.
Uh, when you say that you, um, were given two to three hours' notice, uh, who gave you the notice?
From memory, uh, an email was sent around, uh, that, um, this urgency motion would be, uh, put to council.
Do you remember who the email came from?
No, but I, I, I would assume it came from councillor McNaul, given she's the one that moved this motion.
Um, and in conjunction with the, with the proposed, oh, sorry, in conjunction with the motion, was there any other report or confidential report provided to you? Or any information before the meeting provided to you to explain why the due diligence costed increased so much?
Not from my recollection.
Uh, now, at the, when we come to September 2022, uh, in addition to the usual council meeting towards the end of the month, was there another extraordinary meeting held on the 15th of September 2022?
Yes.
Would document INQ dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot zero nine eight three be brought up? Right. If we move to page three, uh, this was the motion that was being debated. Uh, you can see it's got three paragraphs. Um, the first one is writing to legislative agencies for an investigation into the leaking of confidential information, which is now being displayed on a mobile digital billboard that is authorised by the United Services Union. The information relates to current negotiations that council has entered into regarding the purchase of a new depot.
Yes.
Um, inform office of local government and the minister. And then finally, and note that the purchase of a new depot is to improve the quality to the community and that this breach of confidentiality has a potential negative effect on the community as they will be most disadvantaged if a council and improved depot services is not, um, approved. And then right down the bottom, um, the motion was carried and the councillors voted unanimously for this item.
Yes.
Okay.
It's all good. It's the bit of equipment, the duct tape needs replacement.
Oh. All right, we'll.
We'll proceed. Um, I note on page two of the minutes, under declarations of interest, um, you declared a non-procurnary, less than significant interest, um, as you remember of the United Services Union.
That's correct, yep.
Um, if we go back to page three, um, you can see from the first paragraph, there is a reference to a mobile digital billboard, um, that, uh, was displaying something that's authorised by the United Services Union and the information relates to current negotiations that council has entered into regarding the purchase of a new depot.
Yep.
Um, can you recall what, what occurred that gave rise to this extraordinary meeting?
Uh, yes, so Mayor Manon and councillors of Manon and Goodman felt it appropriate to have an extraordinary meeting of council at significant cost to, to staff and, and, and the council, uh, because the United Services Union, uh, had a, a truck with a digital billboard on the back, um, that was, that had made reference, uh, to 600 Cow Pasture Road. Amongst other things.
I'm sorry?
Uh, amongst other things, it had a whole series of, um, you know, things displayed on there.
Um, and when you say made reference to 600 Cow Pasture Road, made reference to the, um, potential purchase by council?
Yes.
And the resolution was passed?
Yes.
Uh, to your knowledge, were relevant legislative agencies contacted?
Yeah, um, to my understanding, either, it would have been the, the acting seer at the time, I think, wrote a, a series of letters to the minister and the OLG, I think.
Uh, to your knowledge, did an investigation occur?
Uh, I, 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 I would assume so. I don't know. Yep.
You weren't interviewed for any?
No.
Excuse me for a minute. And I'll just take you to one last document before leaving this subtopic. Could INQ dot zero four six dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one be brought up? Yes, please. And can you see this is an article from the Daily Telegraph?
Yes.
Um, with the, um, heading Liverpool Council Calls For Investigation Into Alleged Leaking Of Info To United Services Union?
Yes.
Um, if you go to page two, there appears to be, is it a truck with a billboard?
Yes.
Is that the particular?
Yeah, that looks like the, um, the truck in question.
But what it's depicting doesn't appear to be the, the reference to Cow Pasture Road?
No, it had a, it had a, it was digital, so it had a rotating, um, bunch of images.
Messages.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and one of them was, uh, yeah, a reference to, I can't remember if it exactly said 600 Cow Pasture Road, but uh, it was clear that, uh, it was, it was a reference to, uh, what was going underway in terms of doing due diligence at that site.
Uh, would that be an appropriate time?
Yes, we'll take a short break.
Yes, we'll take a short break, Mr Hagerty, and we'll resume at noon. Um. So if you wouldn't mind being back just a couple of minutes before that, I'd be grateful. Feel free to stretch your legs in the meantime.
He's not here.
I am here. I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, you're here. Here he is.
How are you, Michael?
I'm good. What an interesting morning it's been.
Yeah, well, what what's been in it for you? I've sort of been uh sort of doing a few other little things, but has there any been been anything for you that's come up?
Well, not particularly. I mean, focus this morning has been on uh Mr Hagerty's testimony regarding the acquisition of six hundred Cow Pasture Road, the depot. Um. Obviously, people have heard that, how it came up in the WhatsApp group, which, or WhatsApp chat chat group, which has been mentioned previously. And uh things uh happened fairly fast. It was, you know, brought up and then a few days later, they had an inspection and then uh special um special meeting and it went from there.
Yeah, it was um it was a funny one. And Nathan mentioned during his testimony that uh there was a motion passed at council to adopt the purchase uh in confidential session, but the that Member for Liverpool, Krishma Kalliyada, asked for a probity um like a feasibility? Is that what is that what that is, Michael?
Um. Not feasibility. Probity is a little bit different. Feasibility uh tends to be, well, whether it's feasible, probity is uh more as to the legal position and and the legal requirements as to whether uh what they were doing was legal.
Right. And uh look, we'd love to have your comments this morning. For those who have been listening in, there's been quite a few uh tuned in this morning, so if anyone would like uh to add their comments, please do so across uh our Facebook page at Local Pulse Press or uh also uh on YouTube, if you're watching it there, we've got quite a few uh tuned in at the moment, and uh we'd love to have your comments and see what you think of this morning's session uh out there and the hearings going on underway in Sydney today, Michael. So what other topics do you think? Uh. And I know that I'm sort of putting you on the spot, but are there anything, is there anything you're obviously waiting for? Is there is there something that in your mind that uh you're waiting to hear from Nathan on?
Well, I think um it was, I've got to remember, no. So Nathan, from memory, resigned from council in December twenty twenty, was it December twenty three?
Twenty three, yeah.
Twenty three. Um. And the swearing meeting was then in April of twenty four.
Mm hmm.
So he had already gone when the um the the firing meeting between, well, the the meeting between the mayor and then the RCA took place regarding termination. Um. I don't know whether he would be able to add anything to that because he wasn't part of council at that point in time. Um. It'll be interesting to see where council assisting the commissioner takes uh Mr Hagerty's testimony for the rest of the day. Um, you know, after the morning break. So as um as we've seen, focus has been on uh Cow Pasture, the Cow Pasture Road Depot and how it fell into the strategic plan. It was very interesting to note because seeing the documentation uh that was already put in place and that had been done, the reports that have been done to show that, you know, Rose Street Depot was there to look after a certain area. Uh Devonshire Road Depot was proposed to look after sort of the central part of Liverpool. There was a proposed depot out towards Bradfield and the airport. Uh. And all that was basically tossed aside. Uh. And then six hundred Cow Pasture Road was acquired, which basically threw out all those strategic plans and um strategies, et cetera, uh at the door. Because
Yeah.
it didn't fit any of it.
No, that's right. And it was interesting to look at that quote, and I'd forgotten, but going back and looking at the uh council uh agenda and the decisions that were made at council, councillor Hall was the only councillor that voted against it uh at the time. And just in in talking to um in talking to um uh Peter Hall about it uh from time to time and without putting words into his mouth, he he sort of felt that, you know, potentially it wasn't the ideal location, as you pointed out, Michael. And um, you know, it would be interesting, I might actually even ask him to come on this week um on Thursday and see if he'll come on and maybe give us a bit of an understanding as to what else was going through his mind at the time, why he felt that this particular depot uh was not a good move for council. I know that Cow Pasture Road in the mornings uh is, you know, horrendous for traffic. Um. And, you know, I know that not living
Well, it it is sort of in that section from, say, the intersection of Fifteenth Avenue, Hoxton Park Road through to um the M seven. Um.
Hmm.
Once you get past the M seven, it's not too bad. Uh. But it's also, the traffic is fairly heavy heading down from Elizabeth Drive down Long Cow Pasture Road he heading um towards M seven. And you've got to uh remember that there there is that right, that entry and exit uh is limited, so you can only um turn left out of the depot. Um. You can turn right into the depot from Cow Pasture. Uh. But you can't turn right to get out. So that means all the trucks and all the equipment and everybody that's at that depot, in order to do their jobs, they have to turn left, head towards um uh I think that's heading north from memory. Um. So then they've got to turn around to go to go back to various other places. They've got to, you know, turn turn around and then go back through Hincham Brook and Green Valley. So they've got to like turn off up Green Valley Road or up North Liverpool Road or uh go to Elizabeth Drive and and chuck a left or a right to to get to spots. Like, you can't get you from 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 there, you can't get back um to Hoxton Park Road or you can't go down to Edmondson Park or whatever without doing a a loop, so to speak.
Maybe maybe they should uh think about, Michael, relocating Diamond About. Uh. Well, I suppose it's already gone now, but maybe they could put a put another one in down there so that your the council trucks could turn right coming out of the depot.
Well, no, I think it it it'd need it'd need more than that to fix it. I mean, obviously, you're having you're having a crack here, BJ.
I am, I am.
The the humorous, the humorous BJ has come out. But obviously, I think that's one of the issues that Deputy Mayor and and councillor Hall uh brought up was the fact that the, you know, access is is limited in relation to uh turning. So
Yeah.
Um. Entrance and and, you know, getting in and getting out is um i is fairly limited from the directions that you can approach, and therefore that adds to time. Um.
Yeah.
And it just seems, you know, it was an out of the blue sort of sort of um thing that came up, which uh Nathan Hagerty brought up. Um. You know, in a WhatsApp chat and then very quickly meetings and site visits and, you know, extraordinary meetings, et cetera. It all moves very, very quickly. Um.
And uh that there have been allegations too, whether that site there, just given its zoning, was actually fit for purpose. And I know that councillor Hall has mentioned to me on more than one occasion that um the, you know, the buildings there also, you know, there was questions around whether they would be fit for purpose as well. So you know, a lot of things going on here.
That that was brought up. I can't remember if it was Sheldon Roderick or Tim Paisley that brought up the fact that they were having problems in relation to the DAs uh and the CROC and uh making sure that everything was was uh approved and and viable for that for that depot. You know, that's the sort of feasibility, that's where the feasibility studies come in. That's where the uh detailed reports should have been done and provided to council before, you know, rushing rushing ahead uh to to do this. So um sell story, measure twice, cut once.
You love that saying, don't you, Michael?
Um. Well, it's 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 ingrained in into into your thinking, you know, when you're in the trade. I I wasn't, I've never been a tradie, but I've been associated with tradies and construction for many, many years. And mate, you've got to get the the fundamentals right. If your plans are not done correctly and, you know, if your measurements aren't right, then you can make errors can be made and costly mistakes, so.
Well, I remember you making the same comment about Diamond About as well. Michael, uh let the uh, look, for for whatever they're going through this now, um just to give uh the audience a bit of an update. Uh. I mean, Cow Pasture Road, they had tenants uh situated in that building and uh all those tenants now, by my account, have been uh vacated. And anyone that drives past her every day will notice that it's now an active uh site at that building that's just to the right of the entrance and it's currently being fitted out for council purposes currently, Michael.
Right.
Bless you.
Excuse me, sorry for the cough.
Um. Yeah. So I mean, look, this uh it's it's there, it's it's getting done, but uh, you know, the questions around the purchase and uh, you know, catching up with uh Ned Manon at the uh the Serbian folk uh by um festival.
Um. Roderick Festival, yep.
Yeah, basically, in his defence, he was, you know, we we had a casual chat. One of the things he said to me was, well, it's now worth more than what we what we paid for it. Um. He seems to think that, you know, it was still a good decision for for council to purchase that that property. And um, you know, uh, you know, it it's worth more now than what they paid for it by by his.
Well, you know, coming back to real estate, mate, it's only worth as much as someone is prepared to pay for it and you have to get that buyer to actually pay for it. So um what it's worth on paper and what it's actually worth in in real value, two different things, as as we both know from the real estate side of things. Um.
Well, yeah, the other thing too, Michael, there, I just wanted to let you put out, is that while that is the attitude with this one, it's kind of a a an attitude that could be or a, you know, point of view that could be applied to other things like Three Hoxton Park Road and you know, um councillor Peter Restefsky and, you know, you did some sensational work over the weekend. I'm just doing some work on that this morning in regard to budgets and how budgets have gone. And uh, you know, the sale of Three Hoxton Park Road would have effectively balanced the budget last year, but thankfully, they didn't sell it. And it's now uh anyone that drives past will see that the least uh signs on the on the signboard now, Michael.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's three Hoxton Park Road.
Yeah, it's been leased out. Um. You know, there hasn't been any uh information coming out of council, to my knowledge, on, you know, how much they're getting or whatever, but you know, as you uh, well, as we covered on this show extensively, Three Hoxton Park Road is home to SES and relocating them uh from that location there at Three Hoxton Park Road was going to cost so much money, they would have to spend
Millions of
millions of dollars at Rose Street to accommodate them back at Rose Street, which is what Jason Breton, CEO of Liverpool, or acting CEO at the time, uh was uh was highlighting as a move through council papers that that's what they were looking at doing. And you know, what a disaster that would have been for not only uh ratepayers, that extra cost, but also the residents living on Rose Street. Uh. To have the SES coming and going at all times of the night and during times where, you know, the community is in, you know, real distress and needs people out there quickly, that access to three o off Hoxton Park Road gives them great access and they're specialised out there. Um. You know, make sure that they can get to people and situations as quickly as possible, Michael.
Well, you've got that that SES, I think one of the points that I have made a number of uh on a number of occasions has been the value of that property is not just the income stream provided by the SES, but it's community value in in, as you rightly point out, the fact that we do have the SES there and its location within the LGA to a a number of fact, uh number of areas. So I mean, from Hoxton Park Road, they can go west because they can use the um if they need to, they can get out and and use Hoxton Parks Road and then use the uh transit transit lane up the middle of Hoxton Park Road where the buses go to uh avoid traffic and and get out west. They can uh sort of pop up Ho Hoxton Park Road to get to the Hume Highway and then go out uh to connect to the uh M five to get out to East Liverpool, to Moorbank and and Hammondville and Chipping Norton and all those places there as well. Um. They can go um out to the CBD and and out to Warwick Farm as well. Um. Basically by turning, you know, up uh getting to the top and going down through Copland Street and the Hume Highway once again. Um. So it's it's very central and I I I don't want to uh you know, look at this point in in too much in too much detail over and over, but the issue of the value of a property is not always equated to its income. And um that you've got to look at the uh community value in addition to of some some buildings, not all, but some, some of our assets have not just the income value and it's it's marketable value that way, but also its value uh in location and also its value in um to to the community. So and Three Hoxton Park, I think, is one of those unique properties that stands out as as having all those attributes.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh. Very, very uh very good comments there, Michael. Um. I'd be keen to hear from anyone else out there that so we've got quite a few on the stream at the moment. If anyone wants to uh put in their comments, anything to do with the morning session or uh the sale of Hoxton Park Road and how that went down at the time. I know that uh, you know, it was um uh councillor Peter Restefsky's put some information out on the weekend that um, you know, the two million dollar surplus is now being a thirteen million dollar deficit. Um. And that, you know, part of that result, I guess, that hasn't been articulated in that post was that a lot of it surrounded this decision about Three Hoxton Park Road. And looking into the future, uh thirty three Moore Street was also uh tagged for sale in this cu current financial uh year, Michael, if I haven't got that wrong.
Well, look, you know, I made a point, councillor Restefsky has made the point that, you know, the mayor in his uh election campaign was focused on the two million dollar surplus. I I think I made that point on numerous occasions uh during the um uh after after the uh election was after election was ro result was was um announced. And the very first meeting of the new council was held in October, where the two million dollar surplus had turned into a thirteen million dollar deficit. And um so I've been talking about that for months and that's um, you know, councillor Restefsky has brought that up. I think the other thing to look at is that this is not the first deficit uh under this uh under the mayor, current mayor of Liverpool. So um he had an eleven point four million dollar um deficit back in twenty twenty two, um a small surplus in twenty three and then two deficits in twenty four and twenty five. So if, you know, the the fact that the um Mayor Manon was talking about, you know, council will go into a administration because it had an eleven point four million dollar deficit that he inherited back in twenty uh twenty two, well, we've had two deficits larger than that in the last two years. So on, but by that um logic, we should be going into administration just because the councillors had two two deficits two years in a row.
Yeah, well, that's something that they're certainly going to be looking at, Michael, as part of the public inquiry and uh certainly as part of these hearings, they'll be looking for more evidence and hearing testimony from a number of different people um on that matter. It will be very, very interesting to see where they take Jason Breton, given that he's going to be on the stand uh for the entire week uh from tomorrow. Um. You'd have to think that the range of topics that they're going to be asking to for him to give evidence on are going to be, you know, quite a lot. There's going to be quite a bit that he's going to be asked to give his opinion and make account for.
I hope he's, I hope he brings his memory with him. Um. That we get some that we actually get some answers rather than, I don't recall, I don't remember, I'm not aware. Um. You know, those sorts of answers. I I'm hoping that we do get some, you know, information, informative answers are provided to the questions that will be um will be asked and and that the commissioner can be uh, you know, sort of enlightened on on various situations that he may that he would have been aware of uh during his tenure, both as um acting operations manager and and acting CEO and now CEO.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're moments away from joining uh them back live in Sydney for the public, the uh recommencement of public hearings uh for today, uh Monday, the twenty fifth of August. We have on the stand at the moment, I don't want to sure if you call it on the stand, but uh giving testimony at the moment is uh Member Phil Leppington, Mr Nathan Hagerty, uh in the In the morning session, they have been talking a lot about six hundred Cow Pasture Road. And the details leading up to that to that decision being made at council. And we will, I guess, cross the live to them as soon as the commissioner comes in. Michael, I guess.
They're on their coffee break, BJ, they're having morning coffee.
But they're always late, they're always late, it just drives me nuts bananas because you and end up, you and I end up looking like gooses here trying to extend out the. The commentary, but maybe maybe, Michael, I think.
They're never late, they're just behind schedule.
Does my head in, but I think we'll leave it there, Michael, we're going to cover now, we'll cross now to the, there we go.
Commissioner, can I return to a matter that arose before the short adjournment? And that is, my instructions are in relation to the Devonshire Road site. The that site has been remediated in respect of what used to be contamination, so that the orders you. That's all in the, I'm instructed that that is in the public domain, the fact that that remedy.
Okay, so that covers what we heard earlier today, but does that go back to some orders I made earlier?
If possible, could we could we go back and find out what orders were made, whether anything that that you've made orders about in the past?
Yes.
Or to be revisited, we'll 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 get on to that. But in terms of this morning, the orders that you made this morning ought to be vacated.
And the transcript can be published in the usual way?
That's right.
All right, thank you, Mr Emmett, I'm grateful for that indication. I vacate the orders I made earlier today in relation, pursuant to section twelve B of the Royal Commission. Such that the transcript of what was the private part of the proceedings can be published in the usual way. Thank you, Mr Emmett. Yes, Mr Don.
Immediately before the break, I had taken you to an extraordinary council meeting on the fifteenth of September. September twenty twenty two.
Yes.
Now. The due diligence into the purchase of the property continued. Would document L C C dot zero zero four dot zero one zero dot zero zero four seven be brought up? Yes, please. And can we go towards the bottom of this page? This email is dated the nineteenth of October twenty twenty two. It's from a George Hamporas and it's to a number of people. Third line down, can you see L C C councillors?
Yes.
I take it if an email was sent to that, it included you?
Yes.
And can you see that there's, it's referring to the A I R A R I C. Meeting that's going to be held on the twenty first of October.
Yes.
And Mr Hamporas talks about two late papers. If we go across to page two. You'll see there's the potential site acquisition for the proposed depot. This item can be found in the link below. In addition to complement this item, please see attached. And I'm taking, referring you to the second dot point, a risk and due diligence analysis undertaken.
Yes.
Would document L C C dot zero zero four dot zero one zero dot zero zero five one be brought up, please?
That was the loudest stage whisper we've heard so far.
Commissioner, my my request is that it not be live streamed until I have final instructions in 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 relation to it. I I don't, my client may not make an application in relation to it. It was, at the time, it was commercially sensitive, it may not be now, I need to confirm those instructions.
All right.
In the meantime, could the could the commission proceed without disclosing its contents publicly?
Yes, does that mean we need to do?
Taking Mr Haggerty to certain entries in this.
Right. Why don't I just? Look, I'm just, we'll just, sorry, you gonna say something?
Yes, well, I I it just occurred to me that even maybe a five minute adjournment may suffice to get those instructions.
Look, I think I'll just go into private, I just want to keep things moving. And if we can release the transcript, we'll release the transcript pursuant to section twelve B of the Royal Commissions Act. I direct that the next passage of the hearing be evidence be taken in private. I direct that the transcript not be published otherwise than in accordance with the usual order. And I'll just wait until I get the. Thank you, yes, we're back in public session and yes, Miss.
You can see minutes of the ordinary meeting held on sixteen November twenty twenty two. If we can go through to page fifty one, please. This. Is part of the confidential. Or it's a confidential motion, council move to close session.
Yes.
You can see there, we move down the page. And sorry, I should have gone back up to the subject, sorry. You can see there, the subject is opportunity to purchase a site for a waste and resource recovery centre.
Yes.
So the previous descriptions in other documents of the depot, it's now changed to waste and resource recovery centre.
Yes.
And then if we move. Down to the resolution. You can see purchase the property. The intended use of the property is related to discharge of its domestic waste management function. Then you can see five million dollars is coming from the current domestic waste management reserve. Approving borrowing of funds up to thirty two point seven million. And then an increase in the annual domestic waste management levy by an amount to fully service the law.
Yes.
Notes that an updated long term financial plan is to be submitted to the council on the fourteenth of December. And then a reference to seeking the loan from New South Wales Treasury Corporation concurrently with commercial banks.
Yes.
And then if we continue. There's further resolutions about authorities and delegations. And then in fourteen, keeps confidential this report. And if you keep on going. Anticipated settlement will be by the end of March twenty twenty three. And then we've got on being put to the meeting, motion was carried, but underneath it's got the division.
Yes.
And you voted against it.
Yes.
Um, why did you vote against it?
For the reasons I've outlined earlier and what sort of came to be in this motion. That we started off as potentially spending twenty five million dollars to purchase a site for a mechanic workshop in a wash bay. Where we ended up was purchasing a site for a waste and resource recovery centre. Raising rates through the domestic through the domestic waste levy, borrowing more money and going further into debt. And, you know, that they were the main concerns for me. And then and then overall, just the process, the fact that this had just come from a WhatsApp message. And when the space of a few months, we were off and running, going into more debt, raising rates. And then the other the other major concern I had was that at no point were we allowed to inform the public of this. This was ratepayers' money, significant amount of ratepayers' money being expended on this. And at no point had we undertaken community consultation and and told them what we were doing.
And there was a confidential report provided to the council. If document L C C dot zero zero four dot zero zero five dot one seven oh three.
Whilst that comes up, what what did you have in mind by community consultation in this context? That is, the context of a council looking to purchase a.
So, yeah, you could, council has a site called Liverpool Listens and whatever. Examples given before was Civic Place, when we're upgrading a park, when we were most things, when a policy went out. It was, you know, here's here's something council is considering, give us your feedback. And given that it would have a significant impact on on the people around that area, not to mention every ratepayer by putting their rates up. I think it was more than reasonable that that it go out to community consultation and and the people of Liverpool have their say on whether they thought this was a good idea or not.
How do you balance that against the commercial sensitivities or? If one went out to consultation and said council is looking at spending X on a property in the context of a commercial negotiation. From one view, that might not be such a good idea, there there needs to be a balance struck, do you agree?
There needs to be a balance struck, but at at no point, well, there was. There was a reference made that, you know, there was a, I think there was an offer made for twenty four point five million dollars. Made for that property, but in my experience, especially when it comes to this property. It was effectively a, I guess, a stranded asset. So the it was previously operated as a as a bus depot. The company that operated that bus depot lost the contract about five or six years earlier. Another depot was built about three, four kilometres down the road. And it seemingly, its only sort of seeming use was it was as a bus depot. And, you know, I lived around the corner from there, I used to drive past there most days. And I'd seen a series of signs at the front saying, you know, it was for lease or potentially for sale. And it just struck me that it had a very specific purpose and I I I couldn't see what, who would buy it and for what purpose. So you could you could balance it there that, you know, I I'm not sure sort of what commercial advantage we would be. I guess ruining there by by going out and we could we could do it in a way that didn't disclose the site. Do you think council should raise domestic waste levy? Do you think council should buy a new depot?
Well, that my question probably wasn't clear, is it more general level rather than this. Things you're talking about.
Yeah.
And another way to do that would be through. A publication of draft strategic plans from time to time as they're updated by the council.
Yes, yes, so, yes.
It's not the document, I'm terribly sorry. Sorry, can you keep on going down to page seven? Ah, there it is. This was the confidential report presented to council.
Yes.
And if you go down the page, you can see under the executive summary. They identified the site as a former bus depot.
Yes.
For a waste and resource recovery centre. And then you've got, it was advised that there was an offer of twenty four point five had been received. Owners wanted twenty five million. And then the various due diligence of the two independent valuations. And then a conditional offer of twenty four point seven five million was made. And has been accepted by the owner, subject to suitable contract terms being agreed and finalized.
Yes.
And is it your understanding that that's ultimately what the property sold for?
Yes, there were two valuations and council resolved to go for the higher end of the higher valuation.
Would you go through to page fifteen, please? There are the details of the vendor. Oliveri Transport Services Pty Limited.
The owner.
Yes.
Yep.
Did you know the Oliveris or that particular family of the Oliveris?
I I know of them, they they operated the the bus service. As I said, I lived, you know, not far from there and had spent a significant amount of my time catching buses run by the Oliveris.
And this Oliveri family, to your knowledge, was there a Frank Oliveri? As part of the bus Oliveri family?
There is a Frank Oliveri, but I I've never been able to conclusively establish whether he was related to this Oliveri family.
All right. There's, at one stage within Liverpool was there, I think, a Frank Oliveri, who was like the mayor?
Yes, there, yes. So there's, there's quite a few Frank and there's a few Oliveris with the same name. Yes.
So, and that Frank Oliveri was associated with the bus, buses?
Yes.
Sorry, the Frank Oliveri that was previously a councillor?
And mayor?
And mayor.
Was associated with Oliveri Transport Services?
Is that your understanding?
Yes.
And in addition, you've referred to another Frank Oliveri?
Yes.
And is he known through real estate?
Yeah, he was on Fairfield Council and he's, I think he's now in the real estate business, or he is in the real estate business.
And when he was on Fairfield Council, did he represent a particular party?
He was, he was a member of the Liberal Party.
Do you recall when he was on Fairfield Council?
I think up until 2016 and I, I don't know, but throughout most of the 2000s and up until 2016.
To about 2016?
Yeah. Could have been 2012, but again, yeah, it, it was before my time on, on Liverpool Council.
And one aspect that I didn't close off in the, the lead up to, no, no, sorry. In May, 2023, the 9th of May, the probity report was produced. You recall that councillor Calleander's amendment to the motion was for some kind of probity officer to be appointed?
Yes.
And that led to O'Connor Marston being appointed?
Yes.
And they produced a report in May, 2023.
I, I, I don't recall the, the date it was produced, but yes.
Can you bring up LCC dot zero zero four? Dot zero one?
I rise to my feet before it comes up to say, I'm told there, a privilege claim should be made. The same, on the same basis, we anticipate a privilege claim in relation to it. So before this horse bolts, I should rise to my feet. Even so far as this, people within this room.
Would you excuse me for a minute?
Can I just ask this? Could, could page three of this document not be livestreamed or not be referred to? And I anticipate a claim will be made over that.
Yes.
The balance of the document, there's no difficulty with that. And noting the time, it may be that we can, we can, we can then resolve everything. Should, should page three be necessary in, 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 should any part of page three be necessary? Hopefully we can address that.
Okay, Mr McDonald's heard that. Are you going to page three?
No, I wasn't.
All right. So just when we're scrolling through the document, at an operator, we will go to the pinpoint rather than do the usual scroll through on the screen so that Mr Emmett's name can be not inadvertently trampled on.
Excuse me for a minute.
Yeah, that's all right.
Sorry, I think we're about to bring up the first page, which is LCC dot zero zero four dot zero one four dot two five eight one. And I'll just show you the first page. You can see it's on O'Connor Marston and Associates.
Yes.
You can see the date, the 9th of May, 2023.
Yes.
And then a probity report purchase of 600 Cow Pasture Road Len Waters Estate.
Yes.
O'Connor Marston engaged to provide probity services. Purpose is to provide council with a retrospective probity review of the negotiations and due diligence activities associated with the purchase of 600 Cow Pasture Road. Then it says, this probity report covers the period from 24 August, 2022, the date of OCM's engagement to the date of this report and is based solely on the review of records provided by council as identified in this report. In providing this report, OCM wasn't attending any meetings or provided oversight of the due diligence and negotiation, negotiation activities for the proposed purchase of the site.
Yes, so from the date of the urgency motion to increase the due diligence amount.
And we've seen, there's been some evidence in respect of other projects that occasionally a probity officer is brought in quite early and kind of attends meetings and is an inherent part of
Yes.
the process. Here is outlined in those paragraphs, it seems, O'Connor Marston.